Help us lead with integrity and serve our community with humility and fairness. As many begin the season of Lent, may it be a time of reflection, renewal, and sacrifice, drawing us closer to you and strengthening our commitment to what truly matters. Lord, we remember the words of Proverbs 11:14, "Where there is no guidance, the people fails; but in abundance of counselors there is safety." Grant us wisdom as we serve our city. Bless our work here tonight, in your name we pray, amen. If you'll stay standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mental reflective Lisa Lydia Pledge. Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez.
Present.
Spolaskis.
Here.
Stoker.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Uchola.
Here.
Pintoya.
Here.
Mubrikov.
I'm here.
Right, two minutes of the previous meeting that entertain a motion.
A motion.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Citizen participation for non-agenda items only, there's a five-minute time limit per person, please state your name and your address for the people watching online, and you can come up at any time.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Christina Tazi, I am at 16 Mountview Drive, I'm here as a representative of the Lahana Chamber of Commerce as the Chamber of Commerce President. Thank you all so much for having me this evening, I just wanted to kind of talk about a couple of things going on with the Chamber, and some of it does pertain to the city as well. We do have a really, really great program that we're bringing to Lahana, we are trying to find new programs to help benefit our community. We have on Saturday, March 8th, at Otero College, we're bringing a company called the Sorry, School of Statemanship, Stewardship, and Service, who are going to be putting on a leadership course in a couple months, but this is going to be an introductory session coming up on Saturday, March 8th, again at Otero College, this is going to be an all-day event. This is open to any community members who have any interest in Lahana, if you work here, go to school here, or live in Lahana, so anybody who wants to gain leadership experience or skills to maybe take their citizenship to the next level. So, we invite the community, there is a link on the Lahana Chamber of Commerce Facebook page to sign up for that, we're just trying to get a number of people who are going to be there so we can prepare for some light refreshments and things like that. It begins at 9:00 a.m. and it ends at 4:30 p.m., and again, all of this information is on our Lahana Chamber of Commerce Facebook page, there's links for all of the information. This is kind of a precursor to an eight-week course that's going to be coming up in, I believe, April and May, I don't have those exact dates in front of me, but I did want to make sure to invite everybody to the session on Saturday, as it is a free session. The next item that I'd like to discuss is the Lahana Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors in conjunction with the City of Lahana would like to have a welcome reception for Mr. Hart, and that'll be on Friday, March 21st, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., and we have partnered with the Kiva to have this event located there, which is a wonderful space, obviously a lot of history in our community, so, again, Lahana Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors would like to invite everybody, this is again a free event, there will be light refreshments and snacks for that, and then myself and Mr. Mayor will have a presentation about 6:45, so, just a couple of events that are coming up that we wanted to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to attend, both of these that I've discussed are free events. And looking ahead, it seems a little early, but we are in the planning stages of early settlers' day, and so that is Saturday, September 6th, and we look forward to partnering with the City of Lahana again for that, and I look forward to working together to make that another very successful community event. Last year was our largest event, and we had help from all departments in the city, and we were just so grateful for that, so, that's all I have for this evening. There's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them regarding Lahana Chamber of Commerce happenings? Yes, yep, the welcome reception for Michael Hart will be at the Kiva on Friday, March 21st, 6:30 p.m. Again, all of that information is also on our Lahana Chamber of Commerce Facebook page, so. All right, well, thank you, I hate to present and run, but I've got a kiddo I gotta go pick up, so thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Christina. Anyone else for citizen participation?
Good evening, Douglas Golding, 1316 Lincoln Avenue. Again, I am glad to see that the Lahana webpage is up, it is important however to keep it up to date, I just wondered, this is pretty much just information, it was brought to my attention by Maureen that the Senior Center again is available to rent after three years of not being so, but you won't find that information in the City of Lahana website. Also, the dances are still part of the website, which have been suspended for quite some time. The, I'm not sure when they put together the new schedule, 2025 golf course schedule, but there are some events I know that are already planned, we're still on 2024 information on that part, on the thing, so, and also, the fairway is listed in multiple places on the website, and it's been closed for quite some time. I just want, I'm just bringing these to your attention, it's important to keep it up to date, otherwise, if you go online, you don't get the right stuff, so, thank you for your time.
My name is David Polly, I live at 622 Colorado Avenue. Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, friends, spring is coming, and that means the bears are going to come out of hibernation, and so are the bad guys, and so I wanted to encourage everybody to give the PD a call and get their neighborhoods involved in the neighborhood watch and that kind of stuff, and you know, the other side of this is that the PD has moved to the Armory, and with change and that kind of stuff, I thought it'd be an awesome opportunity to build cohesion in the community, and I thought to ask if we could use the Senior Center maybe on a Friday or a Saturday, when it's not in use, and have a kind of a hamburger cookout, and have the neighborhood watch program going, and whatever proceeds we get to be like on a donation-type basis, but whatever proceeds we get, we can donate that forward to the PD to help with, you know, things that may not be in the budgets or whatever, to make their new facility that much better, and I don't know if that's possible or not, but, but yes, we need more participation in the neighborhood watches in the community, we have some places that really have a good standing, and then other places, not so much, and people come and go and that kind of stuff, so we want to try to build on that, and it's hard to do that in individual community spots, but I think if we could do it in a kind of a central location, advertise it on the radio, we have a kind of a loose coalition of a few folks and businesses and stuff, nobody's asking anybody to pay for anything, but we'll, you know, if we need to pay a fee or whatever, we'll build that into our program, you know, and try to make that work, but, you know, we may only sell 50 hamburgers, I don't know, maybe we'll sell 500, but either way, it would be a good thing to do, and you know, if that works, there's other ideas that might work as well, you know, if we had a, we know we don't have the dances at the Senior Center, but maybe we could have a dance somewhere else, like at the golf course or something, where folks could come and eat and dine, and then have a dance, and charge a small fee for that, and that would pay for the band, and then that money could go forward again. In the cohesion of the community, there's young people coming out of high school, you know, that may want to be firemen, or paramedics, or police officers, and wouldn't it be cool if we could give them a scholarship? And they come back and, you know, be on the city service for maybe two or three or five years or something like that, I don't know, I think that's kind of a good idea, but we have a golf course, the hole-in-one stuff, man, that would be great, because you can get insurance policies, you could have some super good prizes and that kind of stuff, but those are just ideas, but we would really need to make the citizen part of the neighborhood watch, maybe like a 501(c)(3), where we could do the gaming side of it, and still have the supervision with the city and whatever, you know what I mean, and have folks that are residents, you know, participate in that, and control that, and direct it, and all that kind of stuff, and go to parks or any kind of thing like that, but, you know, there's a, in North Lahana, there's also a kind of a shooting range, and I thought of this too, but when I was a young guy, a young man, a kid, they used to have trap shoots, you know, turkey shoots and that kind of stuff, so you shoot, and you keep backing up, and you know, the bad shots are, take it out right away, and then it keeps going, but those are great fundraisers too, you know, but I don't know if that's anything that anybody would be interested, that's where more people could really build on things and really take it to the next level, but I don't know if that's something that you'd want, but definitely we'd like to know if we'd be able to, you know, through the PD, have use with the Senior Center at a later date, on a time when it's not being used, and be able to grill hamburgers outdoors, and, you know, and have that kind of stuff going like a neighborhood watch, but at a more central location, and I guess it would also work if we did it at a park or something like that too, but, but anyway, that's what we're here for.
Thank you very much, you did, you donated signs, was it last year?
Yeah, we got some people to donate, and we got signs, we've done that a couple of times, but, you know, we had bad weather, and that kind of, you know, nobody wanted to get their car out in the hailstorms and stuff, you know, so I can understand that, but we had some things like that that happened, but definitely there's a need, and, you know, there's always a demographic of, you know, when we did it at the Senior Center, we had a great turnout, you know, but it was, it was, you know, people that want to have that kind of security, you know what I mean, so, we need to find that niche with, you know, everybody in the community, because everybody needs law enforcement, whether you're young or old or in-between, because things can happen, and they're the guys that are going to be there, and if you have a relationship with them, that's, that's, that's better, you know, I kind of hang out with the guys, I always tell them, you know, if I gotta go 911, I want you to step on it, you know, but it's my own selfishness there, but everybody has that same feeling, you know, but we need them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful ideas, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation? Okay, moving on to, I want to say this right, yielding, equitable, entry housing, and well-being Yee-Haw update. Who's doing, are you doing it?
Well, I can introduce, we've got, we've got three, three folks that are coming tonight, you guys can walk up if you want, at our most recent meeting, I think one of the things that struck me the most is that Yee-Haw isn't about any one person, so, so we brought three tonight, but Larry Chapman, Jeff Richardson, and Terry Smalling are presenting on behalf of Yee-Haw tonight, just why they're here, it was about a year ago that we had the initial conversation, that the gentleman from the KOA and Mr. Power came and talked to us about what some possibilities were, we were waiting for clarification from the Grants Pass issue that was working through the Supreme Court, and a lot has happened since then, so, super excited to see what this group of volunteers has done. Larry, Larry's crying, no, don't cry, okay, don't cry Larry, it's fine, okay, so I'll turn it over to probably Terry or Jeff, since Larry's busy.
I'm Terry Smalling, I'm primarily with the Kitchen of Kindness, which is part of Yee-Haw, we serve meals every Thursday evening at the River of Life Church Building, First Christian Church Building, which is now operated by the River of Life, and we typically have anywhere from 70 to 100 meals served each week, that includes to-go, as well as people that stay and visit and get to know each other and develop relationships, and so that's a big part of what we try to do. We are part of the street outreach, that includes the Kitchen of Kindness, County Health Department, and the Valleywide Health Systems, and our portion of this work, and we also is included in the Health Department and Warming Centers, because I think, are you over your nervousness? So that's about all I have, I do have some handouts for A.W. after we're finished here, so you can take that with you and look it over at that time.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, my name is Larry Chapman, 606 San Jose. Back in August, I was just minding my own business, having pizza at the buffet, and I heard this conversation going on before behind me, and a friend of mine was part of it, and I got invited to participate in that conversation, which then led to this meeting at Otero College, where the conversation around helping those in need and the unhoused unfolded. There was not a single voice in the room that did not agree that something needed to be done, there may be disagreement about what, but everyone agreed that something needed to be done. Out of that meeting, Yee-Haw formed, it was not formed, it formed, people just came together and said, what can I do, how can I help, how can I participate, and out of that, we have developed, or what has developed, this is kind of morphed into this community collective of people who want to do something to help make this community a better place. That means that the lowest of us have to get raised up, and only those of us who are above them can help reach down and raise them up, and so, what has happened is, just all of these loving souls came together and did what we could to help somebody else, and so, we opened the Warming Centers when the weather was very threatening, we have the Kitchen of Kindness, who is also doing outreach for homeless, and we're trying to develop resources to where people can take next steps. So, what we've been focusing on primarily is first getting people in safe in the Warming Centers, and then doing interviews in the Warming Centers about how we can get them to the next step that they want to take to improve their lives, whether it's here in the community, or at home, wherever their home is, and maybe they've gotten here and gotten stuck, and so we've been able to do compassionate reunification, and get people home to Detroit, Florida, and Alabama, and Georgia, and places like that. Let me pause here and just say, we have not recruited a single volunteer, nor a single dollar, they all just came, they all just came, that's the spirit of what's of Lahana and the surrounding communities, Rocky Ford, Charah, as far as Charah, Rocky Ford, and I'm sure even farther than that, and what we've, what has happened is that we have interviewed, in the five Warming Centers that we've had, we've interviewed over 75 individuals, and we have gotten them the basic stay-alive tools, hygiene packs, cots, blankets, meals, all of that donated, by the churches, by the Kitchen of Kindness, I mean, just, it's just flows, we don't have anywhere else to put the stuff, but in those interviews, we've found a lot of need, and it's not singular need, there are people with substance use disorders, mental health disorders, there are people who are housed and at risk of losing their housing, that came to the Warming Centers because they don't have heat, right, and the beautiful thing about all of this work that we're doing is, we get to come here and report to you something good, I'm sure, I've never been to a city council meeting, but I'm sure there's probably a lot of complaining that goes on in most of these, this is more like a praise report, and I want to thank the mayor, because he opened up with some scripture that I thought was like, wow, did they know we were coming, did they know this is the spirit in which we're doing it? The people perish without guidance, and some people have been without guidance for so long, that they don't know how to get it back, and so we're just walking with them step by step by step by step by step, to help them get it back. Now, everybody wants it back, now everybody believes that they deserve to get it back, that's going to take a little more work, and we're going to plug and manage all the resources here in the community that can help them do that, Valleywide, or Advantage Treatment Center, or RISADA even, or whether to go that far, the churches are just outstanding, they've opened, they just funded doors open, and said you can have a Warming Center here, no reservations whatsoever, and so if you get one of these, or if you have one of these, you'll see the numbers there, the interesting thing I want to point out is that individuals have multiple opportunities, I like to call them opportunities, right, because if they're problems, and it's like, oh, this is great, multiple opportunities to get better, and the question for us is how are we going to tangle it to figure out which opportunity goes first, so they can build into the next one, and the next one, and the next one. So, I think I'm past my five minutes already, but it's, this feels like a pulpit, so you should never have put me here, since I passed Richa, so, but, already too long, I'm going to stop here, you have any questions for me, anything I didn't bring up?
Did Yee-Haw participate in the point-in-time survey?
Yes.
Yes, it was February, was it?
Primarily it was Kitchen of Kindness, but there were some others that...
So what is our unhoused population?
What was it, 30?
38.
Preliminary count suggests there's 31 unhoused, and, no, 28 unhoused, and 31 housed/underhoused, if that makes sense.
That's Lahana and Rocky Ford.
That's Lahana and Rocky Ford.
And just to point out, the point-in-time survey is, you have to find them, right, doing the survey, and if it's not a good time, or if it's not enough time, it's hard to find everyone, I don't really know what that number is, but, you know, 28 is too many, right, those are all people who could some point be sitting up here one day, right, if they get their lives back together, or they could be firefighters, or they could be community volunteers, they could be, the funny thing about the Warming Centers is that, I could tell these stories all night long, the donors soon became volunteers, they thought they would, I'm just speaking in general, that they would drop off something, and then somebody else would take it from there, and then their experience with the Warming Centers freed them, I'll use that word, freed them to actually come and do a shift, our shift's only four hours, because we have almost 40 volunteers, we have 49 or so organizations who have donated to supporting the Warming Centers. We didn't solicit a single one of them, not one, including, and I'll just say this tongue-in-cheek, the International Rocky Ford Pickleball Foundation, that's just a team I played pickleball with, but, they walked, I walked in one day, and she goes, hey, I got some stuff in the car for you, she goes, this is a donation for the thing that you're doing. Now, every time I go, there's something in the car for us, and so, we have two trailers that are full of donations now, cots and hygiene products, and non-perishables that we can use to go forward, so, whatever you have done, whatever you're willing to do to support what we're doing, I'm just going to say in advance, thank you.
I'm Jeff Richardson, I live at 617 San Juan, I just wanted to say that since Larry used most of my time, and I will keep it short, this pulpit or podium is not my comfort place, so, I just wanted to first to welcome to the new city manager, and really just thank you for this community, you know, this thing's come a long way since we started trying to help out however we could, and, you know, we've got to see it, I think, five times now, and we've helped a lot of people, we've gotten people to go in many different directions, we've got a couple people to go to Fort Lyman, we've got a couple people to go out of town, we've gotten people help here in town, who, I guess, kind of along the lines of what Larry said about that scripture, you know, people need help, I mean, people just need someone to get them to the next place, and that's really all we're trying to do with this. So, I don't really have a lot, you know, we've had participation in our city here with the law enforcement, they've been great, everybody's been really great to help out where they could, and to let us do our thing, and I think it's been pretty successful, and it's just been good to see that people are getting some help that they need in this area, and that we've come together, it's really brought a lot of people together in our community in ways that we probably might not have had happen, were it not for these people who are in such desperate need, in such desperate times, it's been below freezing, so, that's it, thank you guys.
What can I say, one other thing? I told you, don't do it. The other thing Jeff was talking, it reminded me that this is catching fire, Los Angeles is now doing a Warming Center, Hasting is now doing a Warming Center, Omar is now doing a Warming Center, and I think part of it is, sometimes people just think someone else is going to do it, but sometimes it's just, you're not sure how to do that, you know, shouldn't you have some kind of clinical blah 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 first, and so people have reached out and said, tell us what you did, and I'm not bragging, I'm just saying that there is a desire out there to help, and it's been tapped into, and it's, I think, it's going to continue to grow, and we just appreciate anything that you can do, a nice word goes a long way, that's it, for real this time.
Two preachers. I wanted to welcome the city manager in Oklahoma, that's where I'm from, Wagner, Wagner.
I know exactly where I am, I'm about an hour away from Wagner.
I'm Allen, Mickey Allen.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Oh God, Larry's had the growing with this, Kitchen of Kindness started about three years ago, April 1st, 2022 was our first meal, and we were having them monthly at that time, and had like 10 people, and now we're having them weekly, up to like 100, 127, I think we had last time, so that's really grown and expanding, and it's not just the homeless and those that are near homeless, but we have older ladies come every week, and just for the interaction, and so it's really good, and there's been a lot of donations to us from the churches and individuals, and so that's really a community effort, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, sir, before you go, any one of the...
I knew there was going to be a question.
Well, for those that maybe want to donate, whether goods and services or volunteer, do you speak into the camera and give them that information so the public knows?
My number is 719-468-7157, I'm at 509 Bellevue, by the way, and we have one other cell phone, that's kind of a office phone.
And the Facebook page.
And Facebook page, yeah, what's that number? Is that 9445? 46845?
9445.
468-9445. But I do want to emphasize, our Facebook page is very robust, and has all of the information, and we appreciate people following the Facebook page and sharing the information, clearly the Warming Centers, I think, are the most visible part of what we have done, but the outreach is 24/7, the outreach doesn't stop even when the temperature rises, and then the resources, I handed out my stash of resource cards to everybody, it's so funny, it was one of our quick wins, and now we've almost, we almost forget to mention it, but I see Chris is back there, and there's a lot of folks here who have worked hours and hours and hours, volunteered hours and hours and hours to make this work in our community, so, just want to give a Yee-Haw. So just want to give a yee-haw to all of you. It's a, it's a, our work is fun and hopeful and it's nice to be making a difference. And everyone is welcome.
And Kitchen Kindness also has a Facebook page. And that, we've put at least something weekly on there regarding our meals. And we do clothing also now. And monthly menu, we do a menu each month. It's always a hot meal and try to be nutritious, you know. No fast food, all homegrown, homemade.
Thank you, Jeremiah. I did a question for you. I'm sorry, just for passing, if you don't mind. Oh, you were OSU?
Oh, we
Bober Center.
I would have been kicked out of my house.
I would like to say, you know, especially in this day and age with social media, there's more, excuse me, more complainers than doers. So I'm glad to see that there's people that weren't even asked, they just stepped up to do. You know, it goes along the same well as Mr. Polly with Neighborhood Watch. You know, this is what we need. We need less complainers, more doers. Get off social media and get out there and do some. So I appreciate everybody that has helped with all of those things that have happened.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Real quick, Maureen, I know Lisa Trugilio, is she still with the Coalition or did they replace her?
Replaced.
Replaced. Do we have a new contact for?
Her name's Amanda Johnston.
Johnston.
Amanda Johnston.
We have her contact information. I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Definitely one of our solid partners, one of the forty-two solid partners.
She, Lisa played a big role in the last discussion, so I'm just making sure we're keeping that line of communication open.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, moving forward, board appointments. It says it's my action, but do you want to kind of explain it, Mrs. Harris?
You'll always have to say something.
Yes.
So we have a charter that acts like our city's constitution. I'm starting at the, I'm just a bill, only a bill sitting here on Capitol Hill. We have a charter that designates how we make certain decisions. One of those decisions is what we do in a situation where a city employee is unhappy in some way. Now, that, the formal things aren't things like suspended, aggrieved, or terminated. In our charter, we are required to have a merit appeals board. The word merit is used because our charter specifically refers to making decisions based on merit. Now, the charter part that has to do with this board is not so much about the merit part. But the other part of our charter states that we will promote people within the city based on merit, which I would hope that to anyone is not much of a surprise. But the merit appeals board is used when there's a circumstance when there is someone who needs to come and speak, getting information about their particular issue. We don't always have a merit appeals board seated because we very seldom have these things happen. But from time to time, it's necessary for us to seat that group of people. It's a group of three people who reside within the taxing limit of the city of Lahana. So do you want me to go ahead or do you want to take over?
You're on a roll.
Yeah, so the three people that we need to appoint this time were kind enough. Well, let me back up and explain this. We certainly could open up this request for interest in the merit appeals board to the entire city of Lahana and everyone on the tax rolls. The thing is, we often realize that we need to seat this board because there is a need. And so we try to move quickly to do that. It is not that we are favoring one person over another, but we do have certain criteria that we would consider if we were to have the entire electorate send in their applications to do this. We would be interested in people who have some experience with human resources, some experience with how Colorado law deals with employees, and how that process is done on a day-to-day basis with a frequent number of people who work. And to do that, we have taken a stab at finding people who are willing to serve. And thankfully, we did have three people who are both well-positioned and willing, which is important. The first person that we've, and I have a very small note here. So if I'm taking over something where you had a tremendous script, I should volley it back, but okay. The first of the folks who we have invited to become a participant and who has agreed is Dylan Martin. Dylan is the director of the founding of, director of OJC Foundation? Is that what it is? Okay. And by now, does he also have some other titles as well?
Director of Auxiliary Services.
There you go, okay. So the, and we are always going to say OJC, but for the newcomers, we should start a better practice. Otero Junior College was renamed like four years ago, Mr. Hart, to become Otero College. And yet, we've all lived here long enough that we will forever make the mistake and call it Otero Junior College. But since you're new, you will not be given the pass. You have to call it Otero College.
And the foundation is still OJC Foundation because it's a lot harder to change the name. So that's where it's
Fair enough, okay. Because nothing could be simple. Yes, okay. So then the next person that we have talked with and who has agreed to be named to the merit appeals board is Angela Bamber. Angela serves as the HR director. HR refers to human resources. So the HR director at CCOM Secpa, which is, this is going to test what I know about this. Is that southeastern Colorado? There we go, that's Secpa. Secpa stands for that. CCOM, I don't know. CCOM is the arm of Secpa that manages to work with fiber and internet. How about we go with that?
Southeast Communications?
Maybe so. Without being kept on the spot for more than one, I'm not sure I can come up with that. The third person who we have asked to be a part of the merit appeals board is Joanna Finney. Joanna serves as the manager of the Child Support Program and Administration for the Otero County Health Service, or Health and Human Services. She's nodding. I hope that I got that right. I told her that I would write it down. Ms. Finney is here this evening to understand a bit more about what's going on, so she may stay after. Or if you had questions for her, I don't know that she's terribly prepared to answer them, but she's seen, she's here and ready to talk. The reason that these folks are being named at a meeting is because this is a, the merit appeals board is a board that the council puts together and what we call seats, which means you would vote on whether to approve these three members. And it would require it would require a motion and a second, the same way that any other thing that you pass would require. What I would suggest is unless there is a significant objection to someone, that you take all three at once rather than voting separately on each.
Run it as a slate as opposed to
Pardon me?
Run it as a slate.
Run it as a slate, that's correct.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the appointments of Dylan Martin, Angela Bamber, and Joanna Finney as a slate to the
Merit Appeal.
Merit Appeal Board.
Appeals.
Merit Appeals Board.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. If an employee did have an issue or wanted to go in front of the board, did they do that as individuals or as the whole board, at all three individuals as a whole?
Oh, okay, so you know what, I might, Dawn, would you be willing to talk a little bit about this? I see that our, well, City of Lahana HR Director is here in the audience tonight, and she and I have talked about this a great deal. Would you mind joining us for this dialogue? Because I hear this is part of what we didn't discuss when you were here at the meeting two weeks ago. We talked a lot about the new personnel policy when you were here. But when we got right down to it, we didn't talk about the parts of our personnel policy that are in the charter. So I think what Mr. Velazquez is asking is what is the process to end up in front of the appeals board? And I promise, I will not leave you alone, but I would love someone else besides myself.
So the merit appeals is the last step in a grievance process, okay? Our grievance process outlines, in the case of a suspension, demotion, or termination, the employee may grieve that action. That begins with the city manager. The recommendation is made then by the city manager. If the employee is not satisfied with that, that's when it goes to the merit appeals board.
And if we back up, is it only to the city manager? I mean, what I'd like to make sure that the council understands is that not every employee takes every grievance upstairs to the city manager because there are there are
Yes.
Change, demand before that.
So if you are grieving the action of another employee, that goes to your supervisor. If you're grieving the action of a supervisor, then that goes straight to the city manager.
Okay, so when an employee decides to appear in front of the the appeals board, is it all three at once?
Yes.
So how do we, this is the follow-up question. I guess a strong man argument for the follow-up question. How do we, by seating the board today, and I have no objections to any of the people, or the board itself, how do we determine if there is a conflict of interest? Either through personal relationships, how do we, how do we get around that? Not that I want to get around anything, but how do we, how do we quash that? I guess that's one of the questions for whichever
That would be a conversation that we would have with the board once the documents are received from the employee.
And I think, if I may, what's important to remember is that we seat the merit appeals board without a mind toward any particular employee because it needs to be, it is dictated within the charter and required. So we seat the merit appeals board and then we will address potential conflicts of interest that might come later. Because the goal is to have a group of three people who are capable of doing the job, but not chosen because of any one particular matter before the board at one time.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a note that we voted on, is it the zoning appeals board? An almost identical process, choosing people to be seated even in, in times of peace and not knowing if it's needed. So I just want to say that this practice is very consistent with the last one that we, as a council, voted on.
That's absolutely correct. In fact, we attempted to do it exactly the same because it was so closely done in time.
My only question is, they're due to the end of this year, so are we going to follow up at our first meeting? Is that what we would do and reconsider or?
And hopefully they all want to still keep doing it after that?
That would be the goal. The point of the more recent date is because they have agreed to serve. They have not been chained to us for their lifetimes. So we wanted to be sure that they would be maybe willing to return in twenty twenty-six.
All right, is there any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Congratulations.
And I want to just say thank you very much both for being here and for agreeing to serve. Vote for, for Ms. Finney who is sitting here and for any of the others from, for Mr. Martin or for Ms. Bamber who might be washing from home. We appreciate the service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
All right, Mrs. Harris, this is your turn again.
Great. Okay, at least these are more common. So it looks like we have three. No, so we need to set a hearing, is that right, for the first one? And Ms. Schofield, is the practice for setting a hearing that we need to have a vote on that? Or do we just make the declaration?
You're just making the declaration because this makes the official notice for this board, who is the local licensing? And then we have to wait thirty days before the public hearing. So this sets that date to start the thirty days.
And if you might be able to borrow Jeremiah's microphone for a moment? Could you describe just quickly, because I think it's important for everyone to hear? We've only done this one other time since I've been in this seat, but we set a hearing under certain circumstances. It is, you want to just go ahead or do you want me to ask questions?
Go ahead and ask questions.
Okay, do we set a hearing because it is the first time that someone has been approved for a liquor license?
So this is a brand-new liquor license?
That's what I mean.
Of a new individual, new business, who has never had a license in their name?
So the reason that this is different than the other ones that we normally and routinely approve based on your recommendation, this is different because we act, we, meaning the city council, also acts as the liquor licensing board. And this is the first time that this particular business or person has made an application, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So in making the determination that we are setting this thirty days out, is there anything additional besides putting that officially on the record that needs to be done?
No, and I have it set for April seventh.
So on April seventh, we'll have a hearing where that particular business or individual owner will attend the council meeting and we will have that discussion with them prior to the rest of the business, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on then to the other two, we have first, an application for a special events permit by the Lahana Elks Lodge. Tara Cleason, who is the event manager, is planning a St. Patrick's Day celebration scheduled to be held on March fifteenth. It will occur from twelve noon until midnight at the Elks Lodge at one nineteen Colorado Avenue. The second is an application for renewal of a fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license by Walmart. They're on Conley Road. Ms. City Clerk Schofield, is there any recommendation that you have regarding this application for the event or for the liquor license for sale?
All paperwork's been turned in and payment received and posted to the property, so I recommend approval for both.
Thank you.
Okay, do we want to do the first one by itself or the mayor two together?
We don't have to vote on the
We don't have to vote, okay.
We need to separate the
Yes. Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the application for the special events by the Elks.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion in two seconds. Any other discussion? I'll ask for your vote. And that passes six to zero with one no vote. Not a no vote, like one did not vote. It's what we got called, did not vote, according to Bob's rules.
Like a recusal versus an abstention.
May or may not be a phase.
All right, I entertain a motion for the second one.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for renewal for Walmart.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mrs. Harris?
Next, we have a resolution approving an application for a variance. And this is a very bland title, so I'll give you a bit of information about it. And just as our mayor Ayala was explaining a moment ago, within the last month, we have officially adopted Bob's Rules of Order versus the parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules of Order that we might have been familiar with in childhood forage clubs. One of the differences is that a party who determines that he or she cannot participate in an activity no longer would say that they abstain because abstention is not permitted within Robert's rules. Instead, they, one would recuse themselves. In some ways, the language is the same, but it also means that that recusal extends to all discussion concerning the vote that would be included. So to save anyone questions, what we understand is that this is an application for a variance. This application has been made by Nils and Maureen Rickoff for their business Carpe Construction, if I'm not mistaken. And they are going to be building a three-car, two-story garage that will be affiliated with the Chestnut Apartment Building located on Fourth Street, although I don't know the cross street.
Can I say it?
Yeah, please.
It's at three twenty-two Santa Fe.
There you go.
So Fourth and Santa Fe.
Fourth and Santa Fe, okay. So Ms. Rickoff, if you'd like to step off the dice long enough for us to just have that discussion, which I realize may feel like musical chairs. that discussion, which I realize may feel like musical chairs because you'll go down and you'll come right back.
She did it at Planning Commission, so she's...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Quickly, let me just explain why a variance is necessary. Specifically within the resolution, you will see it, normally the building codes here in LaHanta, the zone, the zoning rules require that construction on a secondary building like garage should not begin first. So the request is to be permitted to work on building the garage instead of the main building, which would be the Chapman Building. Now, was it discussed in Planning Commission? I only watched half of that meeting. Was it discussed why the garage is being built first, or is there any other information that anyone would want to know about that?
You know, it's funny you watched half of it because it's like a really, really, really short meeting, but, um...
I watched up until the part where I knew how the recusal was going to go and why it was, and I thought, okay, I understand what I'm doing to write it.
So the chestnuts are currently there, correct? And we're building across the alley. Or Neil, do you want to take over?
Sure.
Right here, just so everybody else can hear you.
So the, the actual property is not connected to the chestnut. It is 2,000 square foot, small lot behind the chestnut, across the alley, that is not connected to any other piece of land. And at 2,000 square foot, it's obviously too small to build a residence on. All we want to do is put a parking structure there for the chestnut, which is already constructed. It will be remodeled, but it is constructed. So that's what the variance request is for, because normally you'd have to have a residence, and then you could ask for a, or then you could build a garage or another structure, but in this case, there will be no residence.
And just to be clear for everyone, this will not be a habitable space that you're building, correct?
Correct. It, it is a garage, and not, not to be, no one will be living there.
It just came up in, in planning, so I'm sure everybody knows. Anything else here?
None for me. Were there other questions?
My, my question is, is, uh, what is the designer purpose behind a two-story, three-car garage?
So when we put in the request, the, or when we bought the property, it was because the city had wanted us to find off-street parking, so that was the impetus behind buying the property. The reason for the two-story is because we will be doing construction on the chestnut for probably a couple of years. We wanted a place that could be secure, that we could have equipment in and feel safe. We've already, the chestnut's been broken into a couple of times already. We've had thousands of dollars of tools walk off, and we're looking for a way to avoid that going forward.
Okay, so it's more a second-story for storage, not necessarily parking.
All right, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes six to zero with one did not vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Rickoff, back to the dais.
All right, this next one, Mrs. Harris, before you begin, I just want to say that in a time when government efficiency and accountability are under scrutiny, we must take a hard look at ourselves first as a city. And, you know, we have to make sure we're always being transparent as we can be in everything that we do, and we have to have clear accountability and better oversight, and a commitment to responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars. So it's with that intention that Mrs. Harris is going to talk about this next resolution.
Sure. The resolution is entitled, "A Resolution for a Full Audit of the Property Management Enterprise Fund." It has been brought to my attention by several folks that it can be confusing that we were referring to as an, it as an audit, because in the language of the city of LaHanta, the quote "auditors" who come once a year and look at our financials. But the meaning behind the word "audit" is it can be a review, a detailed look at the processes in place and each of those issues. So the wording there for, for the public who asked, this is not an additional financial audit that repeats the work already done by the city of LaHanta, LaHanta's accountants. This is a request to look at the properties owned by the city and to understand how they are better used, and to know which are assets versus liabilities for the purpose of the enterprise fund. And just to refresh everybody, an enterprise fund means that this is not funded in any way by the general fund for the city of LaHanta. The enterprise fund concept means that it has to be entirely self-sustaining. The money remains within that fund.
And this came up two meetings ago, when I said, you know, this enterprise fund is really not being overseen by utilities, it's not being overseen by council, and then the gifts just kept giving from there. So we will continue to audit and review this, this fund if this is the direction the council wants to go. The only, I, I'll wait for a motion and then we'll...
Only the motion for the, a resolution for a full audit of the property management enterprise fund?
Second. A motion and a second. Now for some discussion. The, the only question I had, and Mrs. Harris can explain it for us better, hopefully, is the money side of it. And, you know, I wasn't sure how we were going to play that, and if you want to explain that a little bit?
Well, I'll speak to some of it. Obviously, anytime that money is needed for something that has not been budgeted, we need to be thinking about where that's going to come from, and when we're keeping in mind how enterprise funds work, we can't move money from every individual fund. We have to, we would be looking at taking money from the general fund to do this if we were going to. One thing that I suggested, and the reason that the, the number of dollars that it will cost is, is across the board unknown, is because this is the kind of thing that might be done in-house without any additional cost at all, or it might be done by hiring an external company to do something, or it could run in the middle and have something like a $5,000 deductible paid to Sursa, the insurance company that takes care of LaHanta, and they would then do the audit themselves. So I think it, it runs through a number of different possible costs. So when drafting this, we, we really didn't have a number, so we put something in that we thought would embrace the possible cost of the insurance deductible, as well as some additional if it turned out that all of you decided that we needed to have a, a different source for that information. And I don't know if you wanted to talk about where that funding would come from at this time, or if we wanted to also talk about how you could, if the resolution were otherwise something you wanted, but the appropriation was not comfortable at this time, you could make an amendment and take the appropriation out with a plan to have to come back later for an appropriation.
And with Bob's rules, you just say you're making a friendly amendment?
That's right, yeah.
How do you guys feel about the, the money side of things?
I mean, my, my biggest question is kind of answered is, you know, where it would come from. Obviously with, you know, what the resolution states, you know, I would suggest and think that that particular enterprise fund is what, what funds it, because I am not for the general fund paying for it, especially, you know, because we found any discrepancies. So I think it should come from that specific enterprise fund.
I think we could certainly talk about that. The problem is that, just like any other time that we're up here talking about spending money, money is always budgeted per year. So even saying that the money should come from the enterprise fund isn't necessarily going to be any easier to do because that money is already spoken for. In addition, there may be some limits to how much administrative work any enterprise fund can pay for.
Your mic, your mic, your mic.
Oh, just, it, it's, it's somewhat ironic that we're talking about where the money would come from to pay for an audit when sort of the impetus for wanting to do the audit in the first place were raises that were given outside of what was part of the transparent and public budgeting process. So I would posit that if money was found by leadership to move around to make raises, they can also move around the same budget to cover the expenses for this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Committee and board reports. I already have planning commissions done because we did everything we did.
Planning commission was covered again. There you go.
There'll be a, there'll be a senior senator advisory board meeting this coming Thursday at Deanna, and I guess to avoid speaking again for Governor Boddy, there'll be a town hall meeting tomorrow at Arkansas Valley Regional Medical Center, starting at 6 and going until 7. There is a highlight on this that, you know, ADRMC is not closing. This is just so the community can get together, and if they have any questions of Andy Fleming or any concerns with what's developed as far as closing the OB, or show up tomorrow night and be part of the discussion.
Any other committee and board reports? City manager comments?
I have a couple. So, start off a little, a little bit on a personal note. I have officially closed my house, so I am officially here now, I guess is the best way to put it. With that, I will be leaving tomorrow. In all seriousness, it's a, the prior, was prior obligations that I had visited with you all about previously starts tomorrow, and with that, I'm going to couple that with going back to Commerce to pick up the rest of my stuff to move out here, since I have a house to move into now. So that's exciting. Couple weeks ago, I attended the legislative workshop down, or down, up in Denver, I got used to that. Capitol's up, not down now. Up in Denver, a couple, some of the key takeaways that I had from that i- is staying in contact with our legislators. I, I think that's a really important thing for us to continue, to continue to do. Anytime we have an event going on or anything, just like tomorrow night, send them, sending them an invite to, to their email. Now, are they going to be able to make everything? No, absolutely not. However, it, it, it keeps that line of communication open between, between us and, and our legislators. I was able to, to meet with Representative Winters and Senator Pelton for just a few minutes there that day when I was at the Capitol. Both were, stood there excited to meet me, looking forward to visiting with me after session. So I think that's when we'll really have opportunity to sit down and visit with them about some of the stuff going on here in southeastern Colorado. The upcoming Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference coming up in, in June. Yeah, so there is a scholarship opportunity that I have filled out for. It's, it's a simple application and a letter on my part, but it also requires a letter from the, the board. I'd sent the mayor a little bit about it previously, but I wanted to mention it today to see if that would be something that y'all would be interested in doing. If selected, they, there's ten scholarships. If, if selected, it would completely pay for everything, my registration, all the meals, all the events, as well as the hotel lodging, plus a $100 travel reimbursement that goes directly to the city. So, so again, it would, it would cost the city anything for me to go, basically. So if that's, that's something y'all would be willing to do for me, I appreciate that. And again, that's due, it's due Friday. I've got my portions already done, but if, you know, the mayor wouldn't mind to, to, to write me a letter, to put it with that pack, I'll be sure to get it sent off before I leave.
And just so the council's aware, that letter is already written. I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with it before I just, you know. Era of transparency, I just want you guys to know, then I can send the email and we're good to go. So is there a consensus on letting Michael apply for free money to the city?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's not free, but it's not, it's nothing coming out of our, out of the city's conference staff for me to be able to, for me to be able to go and attend the event. Plus, on top of that, well, I'll get into that here in just a little bit, when I talk a little bit more about it in my report here. So electric crew, they're doing some line maintenance to get ready for the warmer weather. So if you see them out and about, up doing some things, they're just getting things ready to go. They did replace a pole over there behind the Kiva, and new lights were installed over at Second and San Juan, and they continue to do it with department training just throughout the year. Visited with Tom a little bit, him, him and a few other folks who will be attending the Arkansas River Basin Water Forum that's coming up here in a couple of weeks, I believe. They're also looking at possibly borrowing some irrigation equipment from Aurora that's just hanging out doing nothing right now. So he's working on that connection to, to possibly test that property here and help us do a little bit of irrigation. As well, he's working on a few grants, one with the county and one, I believe at that federal level. So we have 14 candidates put in for the utility clerk position. I believe they did interviews today.
Testing today.
They did, yes, or testing today? Okay, I'm sorry, testing today, interviews tomorrow? One of these days? I'm coming. Anyway, so it, it was nice to get a, a big pool of applicants for, for this position. It seems like there's also going to be a circulation coordinator over the library position, that, that's, that's coming up as well. Street crew's been out putting up stop signs in our uncontrolled intersections, and again, uncontrolled intersections are where there are no stop signs. Again, there's nothing stopping cars from crisscrossing and getting sideways with each other. So public safety, that's, that's great, what we always do, enjoy that. On top of that, they're going to do and replace some of the old poles that we have in town. Again, these are, the poles they're putting in now are, are a, a little more up, up to date. They got the breakaways down at the bottom, so if somebody hits one, it's going to break down at the bottom and just, you know, replace the pole rather than, you know, old ones that are cemented in or concrete or whatever. Those get hit, tear the whole thing up, we got to do the whole thing up and start over So Mark is also in the process of, so we received a $250,000 planning grant for the Anderson Aurora Bridge over there that, that needs to be replaced. So the 250 is for planning, I think I said that, but we're also looking at getting a bridge, if that's the best way to put that. He's still working on that. We're hoping to hear back something about that in April-ish timeframe. Again, if we could get, get a bridge, you know, get gifted a bridge, it would be significant cost savings to, to the city, for sure. Lots of board vacancies going on here lately. Last I knew, Matt, Matt and Clerk had been sending out the, the various folks that had put in to the various board presidents. The source of paper on it was, was good to go, though that was nice. If you're going to attend any of the stuff at CML this year, any of the classes, any of the dates, please get with Melanie sooner rather than later. That way she can get you all signed up, get your hotels figured out. That way you're not having to stay, and I'm not familiar with Colorado enough to know how far away things are from Brechenridge, but that way you don't have to stay here and drive. That's, that's far, right? Far enough. Anyway, anyways. Chief Davidson, talked about high winds today. I think everybody walked outside at any point today, you got smacked in the face. Luckily for me, caught my car at my truck door earlier. Thankfully, there's no car next to me to door ding, so that was nice.
I heard you started the day with a full head of hair.
I did, yeah, it blew right off. It blew right off, that's right. Every, if you don't, I would be so disappointed. Every meeting, okay? Also, we got some, we got some bad weather headed this way towards the middle of the week, so be, be weather cautious out there with what's going on. Fire departments also will be doing some wildland refresher training here coming up because it's about to be wildland season. Probably the most interesting part of the supervisor meeting this morning is when Jennifer Hinkhouse informed everybody about weed control. Every person in that room, except for me, because I didn't know, started writing. Every person in that room, except for me, because I didn't know, started writing. Apparently, is weed control a big thing? So that's, that's something that's coming down the road. Again, I, I didn't know. I thought it was a joke they were playing at first, and then they got real serious about weed control.
And once you get that purse moisture, it's going to be out of control.
Apparently, apparently it's enough that 12 people in a room just started furiously scribbling about weed control in unison. And I was the only one left out. Yeah, I thought it was a joke, I really did at first. I thought, you know, hey, we were talking about weed control, everyone started writing, you know? I thought that's what was going on, but anyways, I digress, moving on here. The 2024 books are closed. The invoices that we will be put in will be in 2025. Sally, I guess they can talk about Sally retiring, right? Can I talk about Sally retiring? She doesn't want to make a big to-do about it, but Sally is retiring. We're going to have her until the end of next week. I think her last day will be Wednesday, is that correct, Eliza? So if you get a chance, stop by, give her a thanks for being here and putting up with all the stuff that Eliza throws at her. Wink, wink, anyway. But we will miss her, and I think we're going to be in the process of eventually replacing her.
That's advertising now.
Advertising now. So if you know someone that's as good as Sally, send them. Library, library always has stuff going on. I brought my little calendar here, and it's like, dang near every day is filled up. And one of the shameless plugs I do want to give to the library is the programs that they have. The programs that folks don't even think about that they know, or that they have. For instance, one that popped out to me today was the Free Legal Clinic that they have. Again, there's just so many resources that our library offers. I think it's a seriously underused resource here in our community, and I just urge everybody to take some time and go over there and just ask, hey, what do you got over here? Because they, I mean, you go in the back, there's just bags and boxes just full of all sorts of neat stuff that you can check out and go do and play with. There's some ukuleles back there. If anybody can play, I can, but there's ukuleles back there that you can rent out and play as well.
Does your calendar have the book sale dates, like April? I think it's on the front, at the top, right?
This is just for March. I just saw it happen, it's from March. But they will be showing some movies towards the end of the month, and it's also Dr. Seuss book for those.
And the adult reading program is going on currently.
Until the end of the month, I believe.
I think Michael's trying to win it this year, so compete with Michael.
Listen, all my books are still boxed up. I do not have my library card yet. I know, shame on me. I haven't got my Colorado license just yet, but we'll get that.
We got 90 days.
We got time, we got time. So as far as police department stuff goes, next week they're going to be hosting the County Sheriff's of Colorado for a five-day Leadership Institute at the training facility. You have four of the police officers from our department will be attending that in July. Some of the forecasting stuff, July, they're going to have some FBI law enforcement, executive development associations, supervisor leadership institute here. Again, we have four of our officers attending that. Then in August, we're going to be conducting a desert snow drug interdiction training. And all classes, costs of these programs are covered by the County Sheriff's of the southeast post-training region, so there's no cost to the city, with the exception of the wages we're paying those folks to attend, of course. We're working on the solar contracts for Industrial Park. The LJ Grill, formerly known as the Fairway, will be open on March 17th. And we're continuing to work with the state on our runway planning stuff. And Smother Burritos at Senior Center this Friday. Apparently, that's a big deal too. Everybody perked up when we start talking about Smother Burritos. Is it? Okay, apparently so. I have so much to learn here. I am so excited about all this, I really am.
Taco Tuesdays.
What's that? Okay. But anyways, Smother Burritos Friday at Senior Center, go on down and get you one or two. Two? Two's appropriate, two's appropriate, cool. Also, with our buses, our city buses, we're switching to the share platform. This is going to allow us to be a little more efficient and effective with our routes that we're running, the drop-offs, pickups, times, and stuff like that. That's a neat new program. They have installed a new warning track at Tiffy Park. This is a requirement for Otero College. Okay, there you go. Just because, yeah, just because if not. And full disclosure, counselor, it does say OJC on my notes, but I, yeah. That's just something that was required for them to be able to play there. I'm sure it's, you know, some sort NC or whatever.
NJCA.
NJCAA, yeah, I'm sure something to do with that.
So far as the chin.
All the spring sports are up and going at this point. Sign up, excuse me, the site at the brick and tile is almost complete, waiting on some good weather to get that finished up, along with some irrigation that they're looking to do out there. Brooks, he was pretty passionate about that this morning. And red trace for Christopher Soccer is up until Friday, and then we'll be looking at summer applications, opening up March 17th for some summer help. And we're also going to be doing some cleanup at cemetery. Please bear with the folks out there doing it. Again, they're just doing their jobs. So if you have something out there that you don't want them to remove, I would strongly urge you to go out and do so before they do. But well, yeah, so that's all I have. Again, I just, I really appreciate this opportunity. It's been an awesome couple of weeks here so far. I'm looking forward to an awesome forever here. So let's just keep on plugging.
Just real quick on the police department update. You know, when they're having trainings and stuff like that, and Michael can report on that, and that's something that, you know, we'll try to do and make sure that we're putting that out there. But when other things happen, like CDI comes in and they want to do something, we are going to cooperate with them, and we cannot share that information because it will potentially, you know, damage what they're trying to get done, and it could be a conflict in what they're trying to get done. That doesn't mean that, you know, we can't in some way dispel the rumors that go out there, but not everything we can share on a city level. And, you know, just so everyone's clear on that, that doesn't mean the worst of the worst is happening, but if something bad is happening, we're going to do our best to try and put that out there for our community, but there's some stuff we just cannot share when that kind of stuff happens. And then on a second note, does anyone have any questions for Michael on his report? All right, governing body comments.
I'll go first.
Uh-oh.
I always go last.
You guys got to arm wrestle for it.
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
All right. So two things, you know, that brought up on the city manager comment, you know, while we're talking about food, somebody in the audience reminded me, wait till you try Dino Doug's. Yeah, it's a thing.
Dino?
Dino Doug's.
Dogs?
Yep.
Hot dogs?
It's a thing. The other thing, I do appreciate all the new signage going up. I do know on the corner of my house, the faded stop sign that has been about a 45-degree angle for over 10 years is now replaced, and it's good to see that we're getting those street names on those signs as well, because I know that helps with newer people, you know, especially when our city manager going around. The other thing I want, the main thing I wanted to talk about, I know we've had it previously, and, you know, it was brought up here at the council, but the young Americans with the mayor town on the road, well, the last time they were in town, they did that at the Armory. Well, that's no longer an option. So within two days, we were able to scramble, and they are now set up at the Elks Lodge, which is convenient that we had an item on the agenda tonight, but that goes for about two weeks, and that's where youth learn financial literacy. And I'm just glad that something was able to work out, even in the short time, like when they started talking to me, I had no idea it was in two days. So, but I think that's one of the key things, and I'm glad we can get that staying here in our community because, you know, financial literacy is a big thing, especially in our tumultuous economy. You never know what it is, but if you can learn, you know, to be literate in the financials, then, you know, you're set, you know, for further on. So I just want to report that that did make it back to town at the last minute, but it is there. So you'll probably see some, you'll probably see some kids in the downtown area, which is what our city also prides ourselves on, so.
They can take pictures of the iconic State Bank Drive-Thru.
Oh, yeah? Now, now that you mention iconic, and we're talking about the Elks. The Elks is the longest continuous tenant in pretty much any building in the city, especially the downtown area.
Thank you for.
We've been there since 1901, and the Elks were actually the ones that built the Kit Carson. So if anybody was interested in history, there you go.
Thanks for having them there.
In my eyes, it was an important thing that we needed to keep in this area, and may have some disgruntled other people around, but we kind of didn't give them an option and said yes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I learned a new word, is it tumultuous? What did you say?
Temultuous.
Don't even, don't even try that.
That's new, I like it.
For me, that's kind of like a wash your sister sauce, wash your sister sauce. You never say, you never say it, say it twice, so.
I don't understand. Think about what she said first.
I attended.
Wrestle later.
I attended the second annual career in technical education.
Paul took over for you, Shan.
Oh, did I spill it? Did I spill it? Oh, okay. Well, I'm getting the words in. I'm not going to use a big word like tumultuous, but attended the second annual career in technical education, open house at the college. I was able to get into the agriculture, the nursing, and the law enforcement tracks. I just, we are so lucky in this community to, just right down the street, right out your front door, we have opportunities for whatever age you decide to become a student there, whether you're graduating from high school, an online school, or maybe you're at some point in your life where you just want to pursue a different career, I would encourage you to go to OJC or to Otero College and take advantage of that. It's here in our community, let's leverage it and build our futures with it. Are you going to go to San Diego or should I do? I'm still waiting for the arguments.
We will afterwards.
Well, this last weekend at Otero College, Girls in the Middle occurred, a great event, 260-plus participants. We want to thank all the people involved in that. There's a board and a lot of volunteers, a lot of volunteers from OJC, sorry, Otero College, that participated in that. We want to thank them. The only drawback this year was that two of the larger attendees were unable to attend the United States Air Force and United Launch Alliance was not able to attend as scheduled due to the change in the administration at a national level and the way money is being looked into. So those funds weren't there to allow them to come down here, but still a successful event, so just wanted to put that out there.
It's my turn?
It's your turn.
We will be with the RTAP. Pam Denahy with the Tourism and the Economic Development has this steering committee going, and the RTAP stands for Rural Technical Assistance Program, and it's for Colorado, and they are going to be, they are going to provide planning assistance to rural Colorado communities looking to develop their outdoor recreation economy. And so if anybody would like to join this, it is on the City of Lahana page, and Melanie said that she would put it up on the public page. It starts March 11th, and that'll be 5:30 to 8:30 PM at the Senior Center, and it's a workshop, goal-setting, initial assets and challenging and brainstorming. The second day is March 12th, and that will be at Otero College in the banquet room. And the first recap of it will be the small group brainstorming and the action discussion, and then lunch will be provided there. And then the second, the afternoon session will be the action prioritization, small group action planning, and wrap-up and next steps. So I'm a part of the steering committee, and it's pretty exciting for Lahana, so.
Anyone else for governing body comments?
Just really quick, thank you to folks who applied, put their name in to be on committees and boards, something we've been encouraging people. We didn't have an urban renewal committee report, but we did have two new members that were voted on to join the Urban Renewal Authority, and that's Zach Minor and Angel Salcedo, I think, bringing some good voices to that. And we actually had more applicants than spots, so I'm excited. I hope that people are feeling like they can be involved in city government in lots of ways, and hoping that as we continue with appointing on boards and authorities, we can have more sharing out at council meetings. I think it's really helpful and important, so. Also, just thanks, Michael. I think it's refreshing, I'm glad you're here. He did lean over and ask if there's really bears coming out in the spring, so I said, no, you're fine. I thought, well, there was that bear in Swink last year, so I'll tell him about the bear.
There's been one in Rocky IV, too.
But it's really refreshing having you here, and it's fun being around town and people saying, have you met Michael? Have you met Michael? And everybody's excited you're here, so thank you. We know you're working hard, and we're glad you decided to stay and get a house, and now you can go get your stuff and come back. So thank you.
All right, real quick, somebody and Michael did chat briefly today. Check your calendars for March 19th. I wanted to do an economic development work session. So if you guys are available on March 19th, probably from 5:00 PM until 6:00 PM. If, Erin, that doesn't work for you, you can be remote if you need to.
I'm just getting on the books now, I'm scheduled for one of them.
Economic Development Workshop.
Work session.
At 6:00?
Five, five, five to six.
Excellent. Here.
Here.
Five to six?
Yes.
Economic Development Workshop?
Yes, ma'am.
19, 5:00. Thank you.
All right.
Sure.
And then, just for the record, we are in an election year, and in an election year, there's all kinds of fun information that everyone needs to know, whether you're running for a position or whether you're trying to get something on the ballot. So Mal was working on a quick one-pager for us to put not just out on our Facebook and on our website, but to hand out if anyone wants to come pick that up. That should be done by the next meeting, so give us time. We're still early, early in the year, so that'll be worked on, so that way, you know, we don't have to keep saying it over and over again. We can just put that out, and everyone can have that information. Other than that, thank you all for coming out tonight. I will now adjourn us. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.